All right, let me just have your attention. What we're going to do this evening, we'll open the meeting with our pledge, and at that time, we will have a memorial service for the Sandy Hook tragedy that we had in our nation this past week, okay? You too. Okay, we'll stand for the pledge. Okay. What we'd like to do this evening is just pay tribute, a memorial service, to the tragedy we had in Sandy Hook, Newtown, Connecticut. We have with us this evening Reverend Brunel from the United Methodist Church, and Charlie, you can introduce your...
Reverend Brian Thomas, he's from Wright's AMI Church.
Okay. Okay, Reverend Brunel.
I just pray. God of us all, we bow before you in prayer this night with heavy hearts. We mourn the tragic events of last Friday in Newtown, Connecticut, and our hearts break for that town. We remember those who were killed. Lord, we cry for them. We cry for their families and friends. We cry for their community. We cry for our country. We cry for ourselves. We wonder when the violence will stop, and we ask what can be done. In this time of sadness and hopelessness, Lord, grant your comfort and your peace. Pour your Spirit especially upon those in Newtown, Connecticut, that they will know they're never alone, that you are with them, carrying them through this sadness and grief, and that millions of people across our country, and indeed throughout the world, are praying for them even now. In this Christmas season, when we celebrate your gift of love to the world, remind those who hurt of your love for them, and work within each of us that we may be peacemakers in this world. May we start right where we live, in this town, in this place, to be people who care for each other, and look out for one another, and bear each other's burdens. Let there be peace on earth, Lord, and let it begin with us. In your precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Emily. Jack. Noah. Caroline. Jessica. Dylan. Madeline. Catherine. Jessie. Gracie.
I just pray. Gracious Father, kind God, merciful Father, Son of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Lord, receive our petition on behalf of our fallen friend in Connecticut. Receive our petition on behalf of the families, the teachers, the first responders who are asked to put aside their emotions and meet our need. Kind God, allow us to remain faithful in this time of tragedy and devastation. We do not ask for and we seek your presence in it. Comfort those families. Be with them morning, noon, and night. But more importantly, God, be with all of us. Be with every town and every community in our great nation as we bear this tragedy with them. Our lives will never be the same. But in it all, God, we ask again that we remain faithful. Question has often been asked, where was God in this? We all must be mindful that there's evil in our midst. And we must prepare ourselves to meet that evil, to confront it, if we must get angry. We pray that our anger moves us to action, not to be there after the aftermath, but to be solid citizens, proud to it, loving one another as best that we can, putting all hate and malice behind us. We live in the land of the dying, trying to get to the land of the living. God, we pray that this tragedy does not infiltrate the borders of Elton, Cecil County. We pray that you are always on guard, that your Holy Spirit is ever-present. Your word says you are an ever-present God. You will never leave us nor forsake us. Now, God, continue to be a beacon of light in this dark situation. Lift our hearts, lift our minds, lift our spirits up. Because though we're prepared for Christmas, have we prepared for Christ. Now, God, receive our prayer from your humble servant, in Jesus' name, amen.
Charlotte. Daniel. Olivia. Josephine. James. Laura. Rachel. Dawn. Allison. Anne Marie.
Mary. Anna Marcus. Benjamin. Chase. Victoria. And Abigail.
Okay, we certainly would ask that you, this Christmas season, keep these new angels that have been going to heaven in your hearts and pray for them. This is a sad time in our nation this year, when it's supposed to be a time of joy. So just remember these children and those teachers and the families that they've left behind. Thank you. All right, now we will continue on with our meeting. Can I get the motion to accept minutes of December the 5th?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion to accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Lewis, you have resolution? Oh, I'm sorry. Just jumped over that one, okay. Go ahead.
Question number 2013-012 is to acknowledge the $100 donation from an anonymous source for the purpose of providing prize money for the holiday decorating.
Okay, the motion to accept budget number 2013-12.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, resolution 15-2012.
Resolution 15-2012 authorizes the Town of Elton's participation in the Maryland Municipal League's Geocache Trail. Whereas the Town of Elton is a member of the Maryland Municipal League, a voluntary nonprofit, nonpartisan association controlled and maintained by city and town governments. Whereas the MML works to strengthen the role and capacity of municipal government. Whereas tourism is one of the top industries in the United States and Maryland, generating jobs and tax revenue. Whereas Maryland residents make up one-third of the state's tourists. Whereas MML works to educate citizens about the fact that only 157 of the placed names on the state map are incorporated towns, cities, and towns. Whereas geocaching and high-tech treasure hunt is a rapidly growing form of tourism where participants use GPS units to find caches that individuals and organizations have hidden all over the world, and then share the information about these caches on the Internet. Whereas the Maryland Municipal League Geocache Trail will be exclusively comprised of caches hidden in Maryland cities and towns. Whereas the Maryland Municipal League Geocache Trail will be publicized in many ways by the MML, the Maryland Geocaching Society, and the Maryland Office of Tourism. Whereas the visitors using Maryland Municipal League Geocache Trail will learn about the Maryland cities and towns while contributing to the local economy. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Mayor's Commissioners of the Town of Elton hereby resolve to participate in the Maryland Municipal League's Geocache Trail. We'll work with the MML and the Maryland Geocaching Society to locate an appropriate place for Elton's geocache. We'll maintain that cache, and we'll adhere to the geocaching standards and procedures.
Okay, the motion to accept resolution 15-2012.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we have another. Special recognition, it's the New County Executive, Terry Moore, step up, please.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton, Terry Moore, County Executive for Cecil County. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and to the citizens of Elton's community, recognition of this unprecedented responsibility bestowed upon her as the first elected county executive for Cecil County, and for her continuing service to her fellow citizens, we hereby extend our best wishes for continued success along with this certificate of special recognition, given on our sand and this seal for the third, thankfully it was the first, the third day of December 2012, Judge Alfonso, the mayor, Commissioner Pinear, Commissioner Hicks, Commissioner Gibbons, and Mayor Jerry Zabanski.
Oh goodness, I'm usually on the giving end of these, so I'm very touched that you have all the people here. Thank you very, very much. As we look at these candles tonight, there was a thought that came to mind that regardless of where our geographical boundaries are, regardless of what town we live in, or what part of Cecil County we live in, regardless of what part of the nation we live in, we're still all one community. And it's important for us all to work together for the good of our community, and of our county, and of our nation. Thank you again. I'm looking so honored to serve the people of Cecil County this way, and I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you all very much.
Okay, Lewis.
First item I have is the Third Amendment to the Artesian Water Maryland Town Development Interconnection Agreement. The town entered into that agreement back in 2006, and it's been amended and revised a few times, and we're at this time approaching a Third Amendment. Third Amendment to this agreement provides for a number of changes to the original agreement. And it includes, currently includes a reduction, no, the Third Amendment includes a reduction of the take-or-pay from current 375,000 gallons a day to 250,000 gallons a day, which is a savings to the Town of Elton. Agreement still provides up to 1.5 million gallons to the town in the event that that water is needed. Stands the agreement till June 30 of 2019. Currently, it would expire in 2014, and there are five five-year renewal options. Additionally, this agreement provides up to 50,000 gallons a day to an interconnect that would be located on Bell Hill Road that would service both the Bell Hill LLC parcel and the Bell Hill Manor LP parcel. This is what are, I mean, the area within the Artesian franchise area. Consequently, the town will sell water to Artesian at the Artesian rate plus 20% of transmission rate, and then they will in turn sell it within the franchise area to two areas that are annexed within the town. I recommend that the town agree to the Third Amendment to this agreement.
Okay, the motion to accept Artesian-Elton Interconnect Agreement, Third Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The next item I have is somewhat connected to the Artesian agreement. It's the Bell Hill Manor project located on Bell Hill Road, which will be the recipient of water that the Artesian purchases from the town and distributes to this parcel of land. The Bell Hill Manor project will be an 84-unit workforce housing project, privately owned. However, there's approximately 1,000 feet of sewer extension that needs to be constructed from this site to a manhole close to the Elton lot. This particular improvement will be constructed by Bell Hill Manor's contractors and dedicated to the town. It lies within a 20-foot utility easement granted by Cecil County to the town, but the town will maintain that particular sewer line when it's constructed. The cost of this is estimated $75,100, which the contractor will pay, or the Bell Hill Manor LP will pay, if they need, and I doubt if they will. The letter of credit is being posted to ensure that this project is completed, and I would recommend that the town enter the Public Works Agreement with Bell Hill Manor LP for the Bell Hill Manor project.
Okay, the motions to accept the Public Works Agreement for Bell Hill Manor.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The last item I have is the Clark Design Group. The board had a meeting last workshop with Clark Design Group, Mark Clark, and as a result of that discussion, the board had made a tentative decision to proceed with the design phase of this project, which would be the work by Clark Design Group. The work to reach the 75% design level, which would include construction documents, a fee of $148,000. The proposal's been submitted to the board for consideration, and I bring it to the board tonight for decision.
All right, we have a motion to accept Mark Clark's proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all I have.
All right, any old business, Mayor Jerry, everything?
No.
Or anything?
I don't know if it's all business or not, but, excuse me. Gary Storey stopped me today and took me to the United Methodist Church to sidewalk along East Main Street, and also the sidewalk along Howard Street. Evidently, and of course, we all were aware of the fact that when he was the commissioner, he has a concern about the safety. So he'd suggest that, you know, each of us would get an opportunity to go there and look at it and walk on it, and maybe bring back a report to the board. I asked him to come to the meeting tonight to present himself, but obviously, he didn't show. It's a serious problem. It's a safety hazard. Call him once today, and I guess he gave some overture about it. And what was that, sir?
The sidewalk is not publicly owned. It can be maintained because of the nature of our ordinance. However, it's actually sidewalk, one of the churches, on property owned by the church. The, we started out some time ago to embark on improvements along that road from the Presbyterian Church to Lucas Lane. However, we did not, were not able to get all the right-of-entry agreements in place in order to proceed with that project. We'll make that attempt. One of the properties was owned by an estate, and we had difficulty communicating with them. We didn't want to have one piece of the property not done. So we had to go back and get rights of entry from all the owners of the property, from essentially Harry Barnes's office all the way up to, I think, the hospice up there at Lucas Lane and East Main Street before we would do it. Town only has a residual unencumbered amount of 22,000 in its budget at this time. That would not be sufficient money to contract that work out for the length and the nature of the work. The town would have to comply with all state specifications because even though it's not state-owned, any sidewalk, curve or vector adjacent to a state highway, would have to comply with state standards. State standards are pretty much, for sidewalks, pretty much similar to the town's standards, but we adopted most of their standards anyway. But I don't recommend the board proceed at this point in time because of the limited amount of money we have in our budget to do the work, and we have a major project underway on High Street that's not completed yet.
That's certainly true, but that does not, whether you have money or not, they still need to go there and see the safety hazard. I understand your point that you, I understand your point that there's no money there. No, 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 no. I understand there's no money, but you need to see it. Those people, those ladies, or those children walking in church, walking along that sidewalk, someone could have a certain injury. Bringing it, you can't do it.
Can Public Works repair any of that?
Once we have rights of entry...
It's bad.
They would have to...
It's bad.
Because they've repaired, I know, the corner of North and Main, and it was the same problem. I mean, the old big bricks are beautiful, but they really are hazardous.
We weren't going to replace it with brick. We would do it with straight concrete, put it on the sidewalk.
So Public Works can't...
The sidewalk is more narrow than the town standard, or the state standard. So that's why we need to write a entry, because you're actually going to improve on, on the property. Sidewalk's narrow, so you have to expand it to a five-foot from the curb line. So we need to make sure we have everybody's permission to be able to do that.
So for that hazard, can Public Works do my question?
Public Works would make an effort to do it, yes.
Well, it'd be similar to what...
I wouldn't, they're very good at small patchwork. They haven't done any extensive work. We usually hire professional, major people to do that kind of work, like Bowman, who's doing the work under Meadows, a contractor sub to Meadows, doing High Street. Very, a lot of work involved in tearing all that curb out and replacing it.
What we do would be similar to what we did on the other side. We did the sidewalk, and then we had a section with bricks going down the side, just like we did on the other side of the street.
Yeah, that was done a number of years ago.
Right, but it'd be the same way.
The other people that are no longer with us.
Yeah, but we do the same project that way, set it up the same way. That way.
If the board orders me to do it, it'll be done. I just told you, we only have 22,000 bucks.
I understand. I'm just saying, give it some consideration.
Oh, I've already given it consideration.
Well, then we just need to get, try and get the right-of-entries, get that down.
Yeah, we have to have rights of entry. You don't want to go on somebody's property without having them sign off on it.
At this point, have we done everything we need to do to, I guess, put up safety awareness in that area? Markers or anything?
No, we have not marked the sidewalk. It's not, it's, we have not marked the sidewalk.
There's a long line on the sidewalk on East Main. Public Works has been there before. I don't know what Dan or why that line's there, but there's been a lot established there. So again, if you would, please look into it.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The only thing, new business I had, Lewis, you sent an email in regards to the de-watering and chemical building that we're going to have it...
What building?
Knocked down?
No.
Or what?
I sent out an email that said that there's equipment that's no longer under service within a building that needs to be removed, particularly storage tanks, chemical storage tanks. A lot of those tanks contain sodium hydroxide, nitric fluoride, potassium bromide, all kinds of hazardous waste. I don't know how much residual material's left. Ken said most of it's gone. It's a jury, and we need to have it removed. So I had to have professional contractors do it. We're not asked, well, they're first remove hazardous material. They're not trained to do that.
So we have to put this out for bid, or could we just get...
Yes, we would put it out for bid.
Okay. The only thing I have, Mayor Joe?
The only thing I have is I want to thank everybody who participated in the holiday decorating contest. Thank Public Works for taking us around the float. We did really have a great time. We had first place, the Bake Oven Family; second place, Laurie Teague; and third place, Chris Gibson and family. So I just want to thank the public for participating, and we are going to do it again next year. We made that decision and get it out there early. The public loved it. We had some stockings full of candies and cookies for the kids, and they just really enjoyed that. So it was a really good night. And I'd like to just wish everyone a very merry Christmas and happy and safe holiday.
Did the mayor take you out and buy you some coffee and doughnuts after that?
Yeah, actually Dan's mother, Dan's wife, made us a cake.
Very good.
What was the rest of that?
It was a wonderful night. We had a lot of people turn out to where we stopped, and we got a great time. And some of the children came up and saw Santa Claus, and Santa Claus was excellent. Really good.
Yes, that was him, Dan's son, playing Santa Claus, and he was just wonderful.
I have nothing new, just want to wish everybody safe and happy holiday.
I'd like to wish everybody safe and happy holidays as well.
The same. Everyone have a blessed, blessed holiday.
Again, I'd do the same thing. And again, try to enjoy your holiday and be safe. And just again, remember the tragedy and put them in your hearts. Okay. We have a... Funnel sheet? Funny sheet?
I've got one segment of new business. Looking at the worker's schedule, I wish we would consider maybe not having them to come to work New Year's Eve because you're going to be operating the building, and I don't see where it's really feasible. Some of us have discussed that on yesterday, so I'm bringing up the discussion now.
I think that's a wonderful idea, and I think they deserve to be able to, like everybody else on the holiday.
I agree with your thoughts on that.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Ron?
Ron?
I'm just going to stand here for a minute. It's ironic.
Ron, come up in the coat so we can carry you.
It's ironic to come to this meeting tonight and have this here present. What's up with most of my mind is I had a niece that was murdered when she was nineteen years old. So I can relate with a child being killed personally. But I come tonight mainly for security purposes, not for myself. I'm really adamant in keeping the neighborhood I live in secure as far as things will be going on. Last two weeks, we've had at least six tires slashed, a mirror broken off in cars, eggs being thrown. I did that as a kid myself. I can't say I didn't, but I didn't slash a tire or anything of that nature. The trouble we used to have after the last meeting that I was at, the officers were there a couple of times.
Is there an address so we can have a thought?
Two forty-two Douglas Street, Douglas Village, okay? In fact, the other night, two officers were there, and both their cars were, from what I understand, keyed, where they were in another residence. The police car. And I just don't understand what's really going on over there. You know, I'm a little apprehensive to say anything because, honestly, it puts me in a little more danger because of word design. I've been around too long in my life not to know that. And I don't want to really threaten anyone, and I wouldn't even think about threatening anyone, but I've had to go through the express to put up surveillance cameras. I never thought in my life that I would incur a false arrest. You know, it's just, it's unconprehensible that that has to be done. I'm concerned about the kids in the neighborhood and so forth. You know, where does it end? Slashing tires, you know, people are loose with guns today, folks. I mean, you know, you don't know what person comes out and sees somebody cutting their tires, you never know. You know, you just never know. And I wouldn't want to see something like that happen, that's for sure. It certainly wouldn't happen to anyone in my household, I can assure you that. But there's got to be a little more patrolling in there. You know, I mean, at least, at least, you know, they come in, and when they do, they turn up there as Windsor Village. They turn up that also known as Douglas Street from what I understand, but when they come to that call sack, they go down once in a while. I don't understand that. I really don't understand that.
Can I ask a question?
And when they do come, what happens? Their keys go, their own cars get keyed. Makes no sense. So they're out there. I just can't, I can't understand that. That's the one thing.
Are people calling nine-one-one when they see something suspicious happening or...
Let me say this, I'm no joke. I've had police come to my house in the past, not on me, but within the range. Well, if you didn't see anybody, you know, you got, listen, I'm from the other school. Let's be real here. You know what I'm saying? If you didn't see them, there's nothing we can do. That's what, that's, that's just a frame of mind that they're in, that they're in, that the police, and I respect all police officers, chief and all his staff. They do the best they can do, I'm sure, but a little bit more needs to be done.
Do all due respect, if they don't get a call, how do they know it's going to be, there's so much problems out there? The calls trigger those issues out in the area. So if you don't call, then it seems like a nice little neighborhood and nothing's going on. So I advise you to make the phone call. You don't have to tell everybody who called. Just make the phone call. At least they'd be tracked down the records.
What that means, I gotta stay up all night just to watch the street or...
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, if you don't do anything, then you're going to just let this stuff happen? I'm just, that's the choice you have to make. But I'm saying on safety reasons, the nine-one-one's there for a reason. Use the number. If you, if you don't make the phone call, then nobody knows there any problems.
And what happens is, here's the thing, though, and this is where it makes sense. When chief gets the records from nine-one-one, and they might see, oh, Douglas Street was called thirty times this month, we need to have cars there more often. If they don't see that, then they don't know, and I'm not, I, you know, chief feel free...
Now, we assign people to patrol according to the volumes of calls and activity in an area. And as you can see, if we don't get a call, we'll never know that that was going on. Patrols go through those streets different times during the day as a matter of routine, but they won't know, or I won't know, unless I can look at the calls for service and see that that's going on there. But from your, from what you've said tonight, none of our cars were keyed in that location. We had a car keyed on this parking lot.
Well, over there, I was the one, there were two cars parked there, and the guy walked past, and it looked like he keyed it.
Yeah, well, I can tell you that the car was keyed on this municipal parking lot.
Right. But it's not just there. It's over on the other streets with the cars, because me and my wife walk at night after I'm putting dinner.
But you have to understand, if you see something going on, and you can identify clothing or anything on people, call, because if we don't get the call then and there to get there and find the people that are in the same clothing that you described, we're not going to catch them.
Well, see, these are the other neighbors that we talk to as we walk through the whole community, and they're all having the same problems we're having. They're having their tires cut, they're having windows broke, everything.
Nobody sees the tattoos linked.
Everybody's in bed when this stuff happens.
Hold on, hold on.
We're not getting into argument. I just want to know, you know, that you know when nine-one-one is...
The logic is this, I moved here...
Trust the board here, then. Could you state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Clay Smith. I live at two forty-two Douglas Street. I'm running, signing off.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't want to get into this, but since I'm, same, it seems like there, when I moved here in nineteen sixty-nine, I was here about probably, I didn't know, I lived outside of Dunkin'. I was here probably three weeks at the moment, and an officer come up to my door, this is in Fairhill, and he said, you know, you have to have your tags renewed, license, you live in, over thirty days. I think it was thirty days at the time, don't quote me on that.
You're right.
Today, and I heard this from a, I'm not going to say who it is because it's not, it, I bet this one one said, but he's a retired placement, a town placement, a number of years. And I talked to him about it. And the answer he gives, and not word verbatim, well, they're kind of, today they're kind of narrow-minded. I mean, they, they could see a car sitting on, there's, I counted them over the last month, people that I know who live here and have lived here are tagged in all states. I don't get that. I had, I had thirty days to get tags on my car, or it was a fine. Now, that isn't an influence on any, any more than what I understand, because you got to catch the person that's in, you got to catch the person that owns the car or whatever. They don't have time to sit out there and wait for this guy or this woman, whoever to come out to get in. And I understand all that, you know? Go back to the old days. Give them more. I mean, it was a lot of revenue.
Well, there's a certain procedure, there's a, there's a procedure that they have to go through to do that, and it's totally, you're right. It's changed, and the way they do things today have changed. But they do their best, and they can, I mean, there's a big area to cover, and yeah, there are a lot of, a lot of state cars, but things have so gotten so wide, and they'll do the best they can, you know? That's it. We'll do everything we can possibly do.
Joe, one's been here for ten years. Ten years! I didn't know, I guess. Hey, thank you for your time.
Mark?
I could speak, just, I am not on the agenda, but to reiterate something the gentleman said, my daughter's car on East Main Street, all four tires were punctured with a knife, and her whole car was keyed. It was over two thousand dollars of a damage to a six-month-old car. This is on Main Street, two fifty-six, next door to Norman Wilson's house, okay? And it was parked in a carport. Now, on the other hand, I will say this, the officer recalled the police, he came out, and he did everything possible, but it was done somewhat to her late at night. Nobody saw anybody. But the officer did try, and he asked questions. He was very sympathetic. He did ask questions about possible people that we might knew might have a grudge. But I did not have any blame to the police officer. He did everything he can, but I think, taking what that gentleman says and my own experience and I think some others, this is just a general disrespect for people's property of the ball. I think that may be what the gentleman's saying is, I don't think he's saying we're going to go back ten years or twenty years. That's impossible, but I don't know what the community can do, but there are lots of people wandering the streets of Elton who think nothing of doing two thousand dollars of a damage to a car. And the police officers can't be everywhere. And again, I have no fault. They're trying their best, but I think it's a subject worth investigating because this is not just happening at Douglas Street or wherever. This is happening, I think, everywhere.
It is. It's that tire slashing, there was a neighborhood in Pennsylvania, very nice neighborhood, that it happened to multiple times, and they just couldn't catch the person. And I don't know if it's something someone's doing now, but it's just, it's happening everywhere.
Yeah, I'm sure they've got the caseload, and they know what cases are open. I'm sure they're still following, trying to follow through, and their daily patrols, you know, they'll check out things. So they'll keep trying, I'm sure. Okay. Ken Graymon?
Please state your name and your address for the records.
Okay, my name is Coach Ken Gammon. Live at sixty-six Winchester Drive in Elton Road.
And I'm Sean Lee. I live at the same address.
Coach Hill Leroy, I live outside the town. I live off one hundred Whitmore Drive over to Thompson Street there.
First of all, we'd like to say thank you for your time hearing what we have to say. Cecil Pride is a basketball organization in, in the town of Elton. We serve pretty much the entire county. And I'm glad that the gentleman kind of came before us because we're trying to attack the issue from not a law enforcement standpoint, but from reaching the youth, which I'm pretty sure that there are young people that's committing those type of crimes and doing those mischievous activities. So our goal is to have an influence on the youth through basketball. And Coach Hill, he'll explain more about our program.
Yeah, you guys probably recognize me from years back. I used to come in here with misty board, and we tried to get kids off the street.
That's right.
And get a program. We were very instrumental in trying to get a center or building built, you know, for basketball. But I met Ken a couple of years ago, and Ken's, his, his job, he's a correctional officer. So he sees the other side of these kids, and they're, you know, they get in trouble, they wind up coming through where he works at. So we're helping troubled kids from anywhere from sixth grade to twelfth grade. And a lot of these kids are kids that have the skill to play basketball, but not necessarily has grades, so they're left out to the street, or their families can't afford the YMCA or, you know, or the other programs, or they're too old for the Elton Parks and Rec organization. Okay? So we deal with all of those kids there, and they come out, and we put them, we put them on teams, and we travel outside the county. We go to Baltimore, just recently this summer, we went to North Carolina and played basketball. And sort of like what we're trying to do, we keep up on the grades. We just had a meeting the other day at the middle school with a kid that's in our program, that disrespected teacher, disrespected the principal, and all the coaches were bought in after we got permission from his mom to discipline him our way. Not to drop him off and say, hey, you can't play no more and let you go, but just to try to bring him in and talk to him and let him know he had to be responsible. And if he wanted to really play, he needs to get his grades up, write letters to those people he disrespected, and we will keep track of it. We also got permission from the principal to even come in and sign her name and sit in on his class, you know, and just watch it. So we're trying to reach out to the youth and give them another avenue of channeling somebody's, you know, pressing or when they're upset and doing things instead of doing vandalism, maybe they can get into the basketball program and, you know, get turned around.
Yeah, do something to that.
Yeah, do something with the energy and the anger. So that's where we are with this. Ken has a great idea. Would you like to propose?
Yes. Well, first, we have a couple of letters that some of our parents wrote just to let you know what we're doing.
Well, this is from an actual principal here in Cecil County. She said, I wanted to share that if Cecil County and Elton wants to continue to grow and change some of the perceptions that are out there about our community, it is imperative that we invest in the kids. Cecil Pride is an organization that builds our children up physically, mentally, emotionally, and academically. The coaches go the extra mile to teach our children the important lessons of life and reinforce positive character. A positive relationship between the schools and the organization has been established, which supports the children and holds them accountable for their actions right of all. Any support for this organization will positively impact the children involved as well as our community. Thank you. And the program, before she speaks, the program is not just for troubled students. Marcus here is a straight A student. He has made straight As the entire school year last year. So we're not just for the troubled students, but just for him as well, and there was another student that was straight A as well.
My name is Mason McCollum. I reside at three twenty-one Suburban Drive. This is my younger brother, Marcus. As Michelle mentioned, he's an eighth grader at Elton Middle School, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Lynette McCollum, and we all reside at the same address. So this is her letter for tonight. I am writing to you with regards to the Cecil Pride AAU basketball team. As a responsible parent, I'm always looking for positive activities and role models for my son, Marcus. Since Marcus has become a member of the Cecil Pride basketball team, he has increased his leadership and teamwork skills. This organization is led by men, women of character and integrity. They are advocates for the youth of Cecil County. Cecil Pride not only emphasizes basketball skills, but focuses on academic achievement, problem-solving, disagreeing appropriately, respecting authority, and other social skills. I'm honored to have an organization such as Cecil Pride in our community. Sincerely, Lynette McCollum.
Very good. So where, what would you like, I mean, how would we get our, somebody involved with your, with this?
Well, I came up with an idea of having a first responders' community day sometime in the spring when the weather breaks. And I don't know if Coach, I mean, not Coach, Chief, I recognize my name, but I was an applicant at one point last year for Elton Police, and I did a ride-along, and this is what spawned the idea. Did a ride-along, and the officers responded to a... I did a ride-along, and the officers responded to a apartment complex, not apartment here. It was because kids were being a little rowdy and disturbing people. When the officers got out there, the kids were very disrespectful to, to the police officers. And actually, it came across as they didn't like the police officers. And I just wanna also mention that the police officers are very professional. But, you know, that made me think about, why is that? And I think a lot of these kids are having a negative experience. Although the police officers are doing their jobs, but a lot of them are seeing police officers come into their home and taking loved ones away in handcuffs, or, you know, or just in the street with the police officers in, enforcing the law. And it is from a negative perspective from the kids. Also, you gotta understand that they, they're hearing the chatter from everybody else about the police officers when they're doing their job. So we're trying to make, or have the youth look at the police officers from a different perspective. If we have a community day where perhaps we have police cars out there, maybe one police car. I see we have the cool chargers now. You know, a fire truck and an ambulance. And the kids can get an opportunity to sit in and see, turn the lights on. And we have an officer that's a friend of the light officer at home, Nicole. We know her very well, you know, where, you know, someone that's very personable and friendly, to just kinda engage with the kids from a different, you know, angle. And, you know, we're thinking about having like maybe a moon bounce out there, have a face painter, a clown. And, you know, it would be very inexpensive, especially if we can get the first responders to volunteer their time and their effort. And basically, the moon bounce is inexpensive, the clown, and maybe a face painter come out.
I'm interested in a clown.
And, you know, it'd just be a good day for the community. I thought that the, the fire department's parking lot is excellent. It's a plenty of room, and it's in a good section, right in the middle of town. And it'd generate a lot of excitement, and people come in. We have, we're connected with, we partners with Project Crossroads. And, and also, we're also partners with the Board of Education here in Cecil County, and the YMCA as well. So we're trying to bring all of them on, on board. Project Crossroad already said 100% they're in, and they're gonna bring their donors in as well. We have Frito-Lay that's willing to donate, they already said they'll donate potato chips, so we can offer our potato chips and everything too.
Oh, great, that, I mean, I'd, I'd love to see that too, because we can, I do belong to the single-handed volunteer fire company there. And if you put something together, I'm sure we could try and get the company to get the parking lot, and certainly get you some engines, and ambulance is very, very easy out there. And I think they would very much be getting, like to get involved as well. And we can get a lot of the EMS people there if you need that. And of course, I know the chief would cooperate to get some of the cars and police officers there. So just want you to coordinate, if you'd like, coordinate it with the chief, and let us know when we're gonna do this ahead of time, and maybe we can definitely plan something out for you, I think that would be wonderful.
I would love to help with that. In fact, I'm surprised that we haven't made contact yet for the Boys and Girls Club. Actually, I have, I have a couple of questions, you're coming, okay. One, how many children are you having your program right now?
We have approximately fifty, well, we, right now, well, when we're in full swing, which is in spring and summer, we're approximately fifty kids.
Okay, do you work with High Road School, the children there also?
I'm aware of that one.
No? Okay, 'cause I'm partnering with them for a fund day now at the Elkton Boys and Girls Club. And we are at fifty children now, very quickly. So I would love to work with you for this. And we have an event planned for early spring with the Courthouse Parking Lot. So if it's something you wanna partner with, if it's something already happening, and do it together, I would love to help with that also. Now, you say this team travels to like Baltimore and places, do you have transportation for this traveling, or?
Well, a lot of times, we have, we have great parents, and, and we have coaches that's willing to just put the kids in and we go. Last year, our furthest trip was to Charlotte, North Carolina, where we competed. Our oldest team, our 11th generation team, came in first place. And, you know, we've rented vans. So we're nonprofit, we're actually a nonprofit organization.
You are, so.
Yes, we are. And with a five-oh.
Five-one-C-three.
Yes. And we are operating under AAU, which is Athletic Union. And, yeah, Amateur Athletic Union. And, you know, a lot of times, we do a lot of fundraising, and that's what we're gonna hopefully be able to do in this, in this proposal that we're doing. You know, we can have our guys out there and ask for donations to help raise money, so that we can do bigger things.
Where do you practice at now?
The Board of Education worked with us, and we use Elkton Middle School.
Okay. We're having a teen night this Friday night at the Boys and Girls Club here in Elkton. So all you teens are welcome to come. But if you, I would love to meet with you, like I said, and try and get something together.
Yeah, our ultimate goal is one day to get maybe a facility, you know, built in the community. 'Cause a lot of communities that we go to, they're operating out of a community center, where it's like a Boys and Girls Club here on 40 in north. And, you know, and we're hoping that one day that something like that can happen here in town. Where it takes the kids off the street, then you don't have to worry about the slashing of tires, because the kids are occupied. And now that the YMCA is kinda like downsizing, and they're cutting off their gym, 'cause they need to bring in funds different ways. They once had three gyms, now they're down to two. So their free gym open time is not available like it used to be. So now those kids are out on the street and not occupied like they used to be.
Well, if you have transportation, I, maybe have, our Rising Sun facility for Boys and Girls Club is going to be in the gym. So, but we'll talk.
Yes.
And, you know, we, we are working towards that goal, to have a recreational center here in town. And we're hoping someday that we can be able to open up the doors and have this happen.
We will bring our program in and operate out of that facility.
Okay.
I really, you know, just to chime in, I really love your focus and, and what you're doing with the youth. I mean, I, I believe in that wholeheartedly. You keep educating them and pumping them with education. Like the YMCA gives all types of scholarships. So I'm sure they'll be glad to support you and educate again the community, the parents, and everything about how, you know, you can get to the Y, what's available through scholarship, and all other organizations. So if you form a committee to, to, to make this day happen, I would love to participate with that. And I'd give as much time as I can and resources to make that happen.
So we will work through Chief Ryan.
Work with him and then see, we'll get something set up, do you have something?
I just wanna say, I appreciate everything you're doing for the youth. I know exactly Coach Leroy, when he first took over, myself, Commissioner Givens, Mr. Webster, we used to do the same exact thing. No place to go, we traveled to Villanova, Baltimore, Philadelphia, and we would just make it happen. And you guys have, I know Coach Leroy, before you came, picked up right where we stopped and took over, and he's been involved for years. Really appreciate the help from you and your wife, because I already know exactly what you're going through as far as trying to make something positive for the kids. But, you know, I'm willing to help support when you're ready to do that, and I don't wanna say it, but I'll donate to Moon Bounce.
And while they are standing also, Coach Leroy used to be my neighbor, he came from Alarunza County, certainly. He's been involved with kids for a long time, going into his own pocket. Also, not that he only work in the community, he coached girls' basketball at Elkton, I think, two years ago. Coach Ken also, I'm familiar with him and his wife, having worked at Elkton High School. He coaches boys' basketball at Elkton and did the same thing. So, you know, we have people basically not only working in the community, but also in the school system for some factors, so that should be a carryover.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we started this with YMCA shirts. And we got laughed at a lot when we went to places, and then we did fundraisers and got uniforms. And then we grew from one team to four. And we brought on more coaches, you know, Coach Leroy and Coach Webster, and a lot of different coaches. And now, when the kids see us, they know who we are by name, and they wave and they speak. And it's very positive, and we're hoping that if we get you all involved, that they will look at you more positively too. You know, from fifth through 12th grade, you know, we've experienced a lot with behavior issues, grades, but we're holding them accountable. So they love basketball, so their grades have improved. And I just wanted to say that we wanna start like a scholarship program, 'cause we, since we started four years ago, those same boys have been with us, and they're, two of them are graduating this year. You know, so we wanna get our name out there, so that other people will know that this is something positive, and that we'll invest in, because it does take money. And right now, it just comes out of our pockets, we do charge a fee. But eventually down the line, we wanna start a scholarship program for kids that can't afford it. Maybe rent van, or have a van for our program, so we don't have to rent all the time and, and pack our cars up. You know, gas is expensive, rental is expensive. So we're hoping that you will work with us, maybe if you know where some avenues of money is that we can use towards the program, it would be put to good use.
I'd like to commend you for what you're doing, because I think we need more people to step up to the plate like yourselves to get involved and get our youth involved, and help get our country back together again here, and get, get to the goodness of the, of this thing. And again, I compliment you on what you're doing. Thank you very much.
I'm a little embarrassed about that church, 'cause I remember a guy I've worked with had YMCA church with my name on the back of it. But we survived it.
We used to have purple jerseys and get called Barney when we walked out.
Yeah, orange, yeah, orange, and they were all the same color.
Get beat by forty.
Thank you.
If the mayor commissioners will play their team, I'll give them a hundred dollars. If they beat you, I'll give them two hundred dollars.
That's, that's a bet, because we will play you. We're gonna hold you to that.
You guys, you guys. It's worth two hundred dollars to see you guys play.
And if we win, if we win, will you double it?
I said a hundred dollars, and two hundred if they beat you.
There you go, you got a challenge.
You guys remember that, I'll play.
All right, if you win, I'll pay three hundred. I don't believe you ever will win.
You know, you know what they used to do in the old school, don't you? Let us win.
That's very nice, Marcus, good to have you on a note like that, that's gonna make everybody really happy, that's great. So is there any other thing?
Some more.
You got a motion to?
Got it.
All those in favor? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.